Okay, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Pastor Dante Long of Sea Planters Church in McDonough, Georgia. It'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance and as the pastor, where's Pastor?
I don't see Pastor. Pastor Adams is here.
Pastor Adams is here.
Would you mind saying a, during our invocation, would you? Doctor, yeah, come on up, Doctor Adams. And please, everyone stand with me and while we're praying this evening, if you don't mind, this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so please pray for those who have been affected by that ugly word that we call cancer, because it touches everybody.
If we could just bow our heads. Gracious Father, we come before you tonight, God, as un-blessed we know how. We ask you, God, to look on us here at the Clayton County Commission Meeting. We pray, God, that you would be in our midst, that you would give us wisdom and foresight as we move forth in the business of Clayton County residents. We pray now, God, that you would touch each of our commissioners, that you would give them, God, your desire in your hearts, God, for what's best for our constituents. We even pray now, God, for those all impacted by illness, especially those impacted by cancer. We know that you're a healer, because I know you healed me and many others, God, of that dreadful disease. So we pray now, God, that you would continue to stretch forth your mercy and favor upon those infected in their families and keep them lifted up before you now. We just ask you, God, to be in our midst, even now, in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Clayton County Board of Commissioners' October 15th meeting. Our first business is adoption of the agenda. Any members have any corrections or amendments?
The what?
Who was the chairman of? Oh, yes, it's me. I'm sorry. Yes, I need to hold the proclamation that's on the agenda for the Atlanta Drum Line. They will be here, the first meeting in November. Can I?
And Commissioner Gregory, I thought there was, is it Commissioner Gregory's District?
No, it has to, oh, you mean the CUP for the?
Yes, Chairman, we're looking to add a CUP to the board agenda, BOC 1908, 2029. It was inadvertently left off of the agenda. We've actually gone through the actual proper advertising for this CUP, so we want to make sure that we put it on the agenda for board consideration tonight.
So you're, the logic or rationale for it to be an emergency item is that it's already went through the advertising phase, and if it's not added now, they'll have to go through all the process all over again?
That is correct.
All right, well, I'll offer that up in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chair, we need to accept the holding of the proclamation.
Oh, I'm so sorry. You are correct.
Thank you, sir.
All right, is there a motion to hold the proclamation? She already made a motion, I'll make, I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Any other changes?
Yes, there's one other item of a rescinding of a contract.
Come here, Ken, oh, is she still?
I'm sorry, yes. I apologize, it came up slow here in my notes, but there's a recommendation for rescinding of a contract, and it was on the consent agenda. Mr. COO may be able to find it quicker than me.
Okay. The rescinding of?
Award of contract for RFP 1964, Coolant Treatment Maintenance Services Annual Contract?
No, it's not on here anymore. Okay, there was a rescinding of a contract. I apologize.
You're good. Commissioner Davis, did you have something?
Yes, I'd like to pull, I've spoken with the applicant, they want to table this to a further date. REZ 1906-0022, as well as CUP 190?
Hold on, which letter item is that?
A, I'm sorry. A and B.
And they want to table it till next?
Till a later day, yes.
All right, motion to pull A and B zoning hearings, yes.
Are they here?
Wait till, are they here? Or did they provide a letter?
Yes, they're here verbally.
And they agreed to?
If you would, just come to the podium right quick, so we can get it as a matter of record. If you would, just state your name.
Alex Gotti.
And you're hearing reference to the zoning hearing of?
That's correct, of Talaxi Event Center.
And you agreed to table this till next, next month's hearing?
Yes.
Next month being November?
What day is it?
Fourth?
November 19th.
November 19th, and you agreed to that. Thank you very much. Motion to hold till November 19th, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Anything else? All right, hearing the motion to adopt, do we add, that we what?
Did you add the, for the legal?
No, that's, no, no. Motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item of business is a presentation by Dr. Beasley, Superintendent for the Clayton County Board of Education.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Turner. It's always good to see you again and be invited back to our public, to all staff members. We'd just like to take a few minutes to basically share a few updates about what's happening in our school system so far this year. The year is moving rather quickly, but we've got quite a bit of work going on. As you all know, we are working towards high performance. We're pleased to share that grad rates are up out of the 11 high schools. All of the high schools increased their grad rates. The alternative school did as well. Four of them are in the 70s, getting closer to the 80s, and the other seven are in the 80s. Two are at 100, and the ones that are in the 80s are getting closer to 90s. So we're moving in the right direction. This year, we began to implement our advanced learning expectations. We have 94% of our sixth graders today preparing to take algebra two years from this year in the eighth grade. They're in accelerated sixth grade math. This year, for the first time, we have 80% of our ninth graders in advanced placement or dual enrollment courses with the expectation that they can earn AP credit over the next three years that they'll be in high school. So we anticipate that, we're really just transforming the way we do business in high schools and education in our school system. We're pleased that 78% of our ninth graders are now in a career pathway. Before, it was very optional, but we're pleased that our ninth graders are getting the message that it's very important to be connected to a career pathway. So it's our expectation that they connect to at least one, and they are well within their rights to connect to as many as their schedules will allow them to do. We have right now over 650 students engaged in dual enrollment, and we anticipate that second semester, that number will go even higher. So we're very pleased, as we partner with the various post-secondary institutions, to see so many of our students taking advantage of the advanced learning expectations. At the K5 level, as we prepare students for rigor beyond elementary school, we're pleased that problem-based learning is a big emphasis, has a big emphasis. Our kids are experiencing very challenging curriculum, where we're developing the four Cs of critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication. The students have voice and choice in the projects that we're expecting them all to do while they're in elementary school, and they will produce a public product that we will, the schools will be putting on display. We're excited that our eighth graders are taking high school credit in the eighth grade. Increasing number are taking Algebra I, Physical Science, and ninth grade literature. We're pleased that this year, we reignited our Clayton County Public Schools Foundation. We raised over $200,000 this year alone, and we awarded 160 student scholarships during graduation in May. We had over 3,000 students, our largest graduating class in Clayton County Public Schools this year, over 3,000 students, and about 72 of them earned an associate's degree. So we're, we believe we're going in the right direction. We want to thank our community, the Commissioners, for supporting the SPOLOX 6. It passed with a pass rate of about, I believe it was 77%, one of the highest passing rates that we've had. So we'll finish up, of course, the Jonesboro High School that you can see currently being constructed as we basically do a tear-down, build-up. We will have a new Morrow High School. We will have a new Lovejoy Elementary School, or an elementary school in the Lovejoy area. We will have a new Forest Park Middle School as a part of SPOLOX 6. We will get our first early learning center in the Riverdale area. We will, as a district, get our first college and career academy as a part of SPOLOX 6 that will serve all high schools. Of course, we'll continue with our HVAC upgrades, our renovations, purchasing new school buses, and our one-to-one initiative where we are ensuring that all third through 12th grade students over the course of the next few years will get issued a Chromebook as a part of their instructional supplies. I'll conclude by saying that a part of our effort to raise funds for student scholarships will occur on December 14th. That's Clayton Knights, where we will have Orchestra Noir to perform and give us a first-class event, and we are hoping that, hopeful that our community will come out and support us. Time will not allow me to share that discipline is improving, that instruction is improving, grad rates are improving, SAT scores took a little decline this year because we had so many more students take the SAT this year. As a matter of fact, we're, we've been working, I don't know if you all know this, but we've been working with the various presidents of colleges and universities, meeting with them to encourage them to give students, when they see applications from Clayton County Public Schools, that they would give our students strong consideration. So we really pushed a lot of our kids who probably would not have considered college. We really encouraged them to do whatever they needed to do to take the SAT and ACT to prepare themselves for the opportunities, and we're very pleased that we have seen a significant increase in the number of our students who are matriculating on to post-secondary options. We're working on our challenges, it's not perfect. Whenever you have two people in one space, you always have some challenges, and so when you have 55,000 children, 7,000 employees, you can imagine that you'll have challenges. But we believe that the organization is improving, the culture is improving across the board, and we continue, we continue to produce and will continue to produce a high-performing school district for the citizens of Clayton County. So thank you for this opportunity. If you have any questions, I'll entertain whatever questions you may have. If I can't answer them, I may pitch them to Jada, our Communications Chief, and she'll be able to basically take the question back to the team, and we'll make sure we get a response for you. And I'd like to say, if you're not getting our communications, please see Jada while you have her here, and we'll get you connected to the various communication efforts that we have occurring in the school system. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Doctor. Any questions for Dr. Beasley?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Thank you so much for coming and giving us that correct information, because over and over, we, from time to time, will get a public comment with somebody really just degrading our school system. So I am so proud and so thankful for you to come and give us the correct information. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just thank you for what you do and what you have done.
Yes.
I did owe that. Thank you for what you all are doing. As a parent with children still in Clayton County schools, I feel like I'll be a forever partner with the school system with the twins. But I want to commend you also on the 72 graduates that have their associate's degree. That is truly commendable, and I look forward to the school system working to see how we can increase that number and look at opportunities to house the dual enrollment program actually on campus in the schools. That would be great. And then the other just comment I want to make to you is, we had some great news in the newspaper just recently about Chelsea and Chelisia, and I want to commend your homeless liaison that works diligently to make that happen. So I look forward to a continued partnership.
If I may, I should share that North Clayton High School is an early college magnet now, and so we'll see more kids getting those associate degrees. All of the high schools right now are working diligently. We've met with the president at various colleges and universities to ensure that our students are taking advantage, and we are working to get our teachers at the high schools, those who have the credentials, established as adjunct instructors, so we can offer those courses at the high school. But we also see some Meriden kids leaving the high school, going to the college campus as well. But we don't want any obstacles, so we're going to have a variety of choices.
Awesome.
All right, well, definitely moving in the right direction. I commend you and your staff and the teachers and everybody else involved in moving our school system forward. We all know that a strong school system means a strong county, and a strong, we're Clayton Strong, right? Now, got you, COO.
Mr. Chair, one other thing, I don't think the community knows that you all have been planning closely with the county, with our COO, who sits there. You all meet how often, Mr. Stanford?
Monthly.
You all meet monthly to tackle the issues and also to strategically plan out our communities. I really commend you and your staff for being committed to that.
Yeah, we are definitely linked. They might meet monthly, but we also have two and three meetings throughout the month as well, so appreciate all that you do.
We appreciate the collaboration.
Also, can I say that, and just another feather in your cap, you have a student from North Clayton High School that just graduated from Mahary Dental School this past May with my, goes with school with my son, and she's actually starting a practice, trying to start a practice in Riverdale on Valley Road.
Excellent. Excellent. Excellent.
And there are many stories like that.
And we need to hear those stories, and we need to let it be known throughout the community. So encourage them to come back and share their stories with us, whether it's in this venue or somewhere else. But thank you for all you do, sir.
So thank you for earning your pay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Our next item of business is the public comments. The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Mr. Alvin Farmer.
Mr. Farmer, proactive community activist, Clayton County. I just heard the superintendent speak, and if his words are true, then I commend him. But he has to get that report from the governor and from me, because I still test these students, and I found a deficiency in that. I want this, what you spoke of, I want that to be the rule and not the exception. I gave them information about Donors Choose over a year ago. That people said they just started working on that two weeks ago. I don't understand the problem. So I ain't going to keep on working on it. I have a paper and a recommended fix to the problem that I have given to a lot of schools, and then a lot of their people to a fix to the problem. Because like I said, our force, if we know a problem, we also should, should know the solution. The second thing is, y'all always talking about giving money for charities, and I'm good with that. But I gave you the papers that I did, the money that I made from recycling. Those people in charities, they should also get some kind of recycling, and then that'll help clean up the county. I went to Griswells speaking to them, and a lot of people don't come to you with these, with these problems. A lot of people in this county, which I wish they wouldn't do it, hear no evil, see no evil, speak no evil, and very few people are speaking up to you about that. Those clocks at Griswells, at least one of them I know, a battery was left in there, and one of the employees said she's been there nine years, and that clock has never worked. If you leave your battery in your car for nine years, your car probably won't work again. So that's probably why these clocks are there, and everybody got the same story, that they are up for decoration right now. The, on a positive note, the Lovejoy Library is doing excellent job. I go there a whole lot, mostly on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Mr. Ray has an old school club, it is outstanding, just like everything else. Some people agree at this rate, but my evaluation is that he's doing a good job. The Aquatic Center, that bus stop has, has still not been moved. I informed you, I almost got hit by a Cadillac SUV the other day. I have contacted our Georgia Department of Transportation, the Fire Department, because I was talking to a gentleman, they said that that's also a fire hazard. If a bus is there, a fire department is coming, and another vehicle, somebody got to give way or run it, run into each other. You gave me the CEO, Jeff Parker, I've been calling him. I got a call back from a Mr. Van Sickle, and still this has been going on a year. I don't understand this. This is a safety issue, an accident waiting to happen, and it not been moved. Maybe I'm in the wrong business, but I'll keep on bringing it up until such time as it's moved, before somebody cost their life, maybe even. Do your family and friends go to that aquatic center? Do you put them in harm's way? Because I don't want my fans and friends, or even the county people, in harm's way.
Your time is up, sir, and yes, we are working on that. It's going to take a little time, but it's going to be done. Thank you. Donna Mullins.
My name's Donna Mullins. I live in unincorporated Ellenwood in unincorporated Clayton County. I'm here tonight as a lifelong citizen, 55 years, I know it don't look that old, but even though I've been here this long, there's some, some things I still don't understand and I'm not quite sure of, so I want to try to ask for some guidance from you tonight, if you could possibly help me. I've, I've been here, like I said, my whole life. I actually have a company here, Mullins International Solutions. We do operational compliance training for international trade and logistics, so I'm very aware of the need of warehouses and trucks. I'm also very aware of the dangers, and so I'm asking for guidance, if you could tell me. I've noticed there's trucks parking overnight on the exit ramps, and, and it's not safe, and nobody can pull over if there is an emergency. There's big gigantic holes, the streets are tore up and everything, and I know it's not safe, I'm not sure, it might not be legal either, but could you tell me who I would bring that to the attention of?
You talking about the potholes or the parking on side of the road?
Yes, the parking on side of the road.
They should be parked on side of the road, so the police?
The police?
Should patrol that more often, to make sure?
I will let them know again. I brought that to their attention, they said they needed your support from the board, so I'll go back.
To get a, to get a eighteen Willy off the side of the road?
Yes, sir. The, the next one, the next one is tractor-trailers are constantly taking shortcuts through residential areas. Who would I report that to?
Police Department.
Police Department, there it is. And if a citizen thinks that a business might be operating outside of the ordinance, who would they contact on that one?
Police Department or the Community Development.
Community Development.
Depends on what type of activity you're talking about. But at any rate, report it, and we'll get it to the right people.
Yes, sir.
So if you have a concern in any aspect?
Yeah, okay.
We're going to, we're going to check it out.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My, my very last one. Article 2, Section 210 says, "Powers and duties of the Commissioners calls for impart, the Board shall have direct control over all property of the county, establish, change, or abolish roads or bridge or ferries, regulate land use, everything that would be reasonably safe to the public, health, safety, morality, and general welfare." How would a citizen go about really persuading the Commission to do that?
I'm not sure I understand, persuading us to do our jobs, is that what you're saying?
To take the kids, the citizen first, before anything.
Well, you got to make an individual plea to each Commissioner. We are elected officials?
Yes, sir.
And the citizens are our bosses, so hey, bring it to us.
I received acknowledgement from two Commissioners where I had made contact, but the three, three did not, so I hope you had an opportunity to read my correspondence. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Karen White, Bray Boy. Karen White, Bray Boy.
Good evening. I am a resident of Stratford Glen.
Yes, state your name.
Karen White, Bray Boy. And this is actually my first time attending a meeting, so it's good to be here, but I just want to express my concern for the many truck stops that we have going up on our area off of Anvil Block. Right now, it is overwhelming, and I'll just let you know that. Traveling down Anvil Block in the morning, trying to get on 675, trying to go the other way on 75, there are trucks. We got the trucks coming from Kroger down there, and then we have the ones coming on the other end. I mean, it's just too many truck stops over there. So my thing is, I don't want to see another truck stop in Clayton County off of Anvil Block. We have the E-Commerce Center over there that was built, beautiful building, that could be utilized for anybody else who wants to put a truck stop. I just don't think that we need another truck stop in our community. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Roy Hand. Roy Hand.
I'm here. You know I'm going to be here. I'm Roy Hand from Fett County. I own a piece of property across the street where the Clippers are trying to put in a BP station, and I'm here to speak in behalf of them, being approved tonight if it's possible.
If you're here for the zoning, we're not, this is just for public comment. If you're here, we'll, when I call for it, we'll get to that piece, I'll call you back up. Yes, sir. Miki Garber.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield the floor to the next speaker.
Thank you, sir. Sandra Scott. Representative Sandra Scott, yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment.
Next item of business is adoption of the consent agenda.
Or is there a motion to adopt?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item goes into zoning, so that would be item number C, which would be a MOD 1908-0005.
I'll sound the case, please. The applicant, Adam Richards, on behalf of Anvil Block Road and Williamson Road, is requesting a modification to the existing planned unit development of Ellenwood to revise the site plan in order to allow a newly constructed 351,000 square foot warehouse distribution facility. The subject property has approximately 24 acres of land and has frontage on Anvil Block Road, has approximately 1,0063 feet of frontage on Anvil Block. Staff recommendation is for approval, the zoning advisory group recommendation is for denial.
Okay, the applicant's here. Please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, can I read the requirements first?
Go ahead.
Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have 10 minutes to present its case. In the event there's more than one speaker per side, speaker must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the 10-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker should cease immediately from speaking. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of your organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Holding up signs, clapping, and yelling to show support for or against a speaker will not be permitted, but a show of hands or quietly standing will be permitted to show support or opposition for a speaker's position.
Thank you. Yes, state your name for the record, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Harold Buckley, twenty-eight forty-nine Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta. I'm here before you tonight on behalf of Anvil Block Partners, the applicant and his case. We have an introductory video-
I'm, I'm sorry, just to cut you off. Would you like to save any minutes in rebuttal at the end of your presentation?
I would. Whatever time I have left-
Usually two.
I'm sorry?
Usually two, 'cause we have to have some time for the citizens come up and speak.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Two minutes.
Alright, proceed on.
Two minutes.
Yes.
I need to repeat it for the people in the back to be able to hear the time, sir. That's what I was doing.
Oh, no problem.
I have an introductory video that we're gonna run, and I'm gonna talk while it is running. I thought that what I would do would start by talking about what we're here to ask for, and that is a modification to the existing PUD zoning, from one permitted use to the next. What you'll see in the video is a rendering of the proposed facility and the quality of it, as well as the area that it's located in. The property is currently zoned PUD, and the site plan, it limits the use to a retail center with two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of retail and one thousand surface parking spaces. Right now, we're asking to amend that site plan to show the distribution center that we are asking for. And the reason, and I'm just gonna give you a quick bullet point list of reasons why this is something that the Board of Commissioners should approve. The first is that this property was zoned to the current PUD zoning back in two thousand and three. In the intervening sixteen years, it has been marketed for restaurant and retail development, and there have not been any prospects in that time who have expressed an interest in using the property in that manner. And so, right now, the retail development that's approved for the development is not economically feasible, as evidenced by the lack of interest from the market. Number two would be the number of jobs and quality of jobs that will be created. If this property were developed with our distribution center, it would generate between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty temporary construction jobs, followed by two hundred and fifty permanent jobs in the proposed distribution facility. Second would be the tax revenue generated by this development right now. Approximately seventy-seven percent of Clayton County's land area is zoned for residential and agricultural use, which produces a tax deficit for the county. The remaining twenty-three percent of the land is zoned for office commercial and industrial uses, and those are where the, the county generates a tax surplus. Right now, this property generates an annual tax revenue of fourteen thousand dollars in annual property tax. That would go to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars if it were developed with the center. Over the course of ten years, you're talking about a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of property tax, as opposed to one point seven mil, one point seven-five million dollars that would be generated by the center. And that doesn't even factor in the ad valorem tax that would be generated by the inventory in the facility. If you look at the existing retail center that's been approved, as compared to this development, the last thing I'll touch on is traffic. There's been a lot of discussion about that. Right now, the traffic analysis shows that the approved retail center would generate over nine thousand and two hundred vehicles per day coming to this site. That is opposed, as opposed to the distribution center, that would bring about six hundred and twenty-five vehicles per day to the site. Now, people would say, now that's vehicles, what about trucks? Well, retail relies on trucks. Right now, the currently approved development would generate about thirty-five trucks per day. What we're asking for would increase that by eighteen trucks over the course of the same day to fifty-three trucks a day. That's an average increase of about a truck and a half per hour over the retail that people have gotten behind on the site. So with that, I would reserve, I know I said two minutes, but if, to the extent I have more than two minutes, I would reserve that for rebuttal.
Alright. Are there any questions from the Board? Okay.
You had, you said it would generate-
Hold on a second, I'm sorry. Let's hear from the citizens prior to. Is there anybody here that wanna speak in favor of this request? Please come forward, please.
Good afternoon. Sandra G. Scott, live in Rex, Georgia. I am in favor of this development. I think it is something that we need. We need jobs here in Clayton County. So I am definitely in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else who wants to speak in favor of?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners. I'm Gail Davenport. I reside at seventy-seven forty, Field Road in Jonesboro, three oh two three six, and also represent Senate District forty-four, which is, includes portions of Clayton County and portions of DeKalb County. Now, I had a call some time ago from some developers that told me that they had jobs for the citizens of Clayton County, and it was in my district. And I went over to Anvil Block to take a look at it, the facility, and I think that's where the FedEx office is. And I was impressed with the area there, but you know, I always take a look at what would be a negative impact on the county and the citizens I represent. So I had to ride around to take a look at it, to make sure that it was not a negative impact. So based on the information that I've received, uh, I am in favor of this. No citizens have called me to say that they did not want jobs. And I just heard the gentleman say that it's paying now fourteen thousand dollars in taxes, and I have some senior citizens who have a twenty-five acre tract of land, and the county is charging them twenty-five thousand dollars, and they can't pay it. So if there is a company that is here that is willing to bring jobs for the citizens that, in, in my district, I am all for that, if it does not have a negative impact on this community. If they're willing to pay one point seven million in taxes, or whatever that is, over time, over the next ten years, uh, I would say the business needs that rather than my citizens. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, are you, come forth, sir. The gentleman, yeah, come on. You got about a minute.
How's the Board doing today?
Fine, fine.
Good. I'm in favor of it.
State your name, please, sir.
My name is Donald Melvin, from Rockdale County. I work here in Rock, in Clayton County. And I'd like to see the project go, and I'd like to have a job there as a contractor.
And, and get paid on time. I'm with you, sir. I'm with you. Not gonna let that go. Yes, sir. You got twenty seconds. State your name.
I own the property on thirty-eight sixty-one Grand Road, and I think it's awesome for the community. It's gonna bring jobs, it's gonna bring, it's gonna better the whole area, you know. The crimina, the delinquency that you have in that area right now is high, and I think projects like these are gonna wipe that out. And like they said, it's gonna bring high-
Your, your time is up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm in favor.
Alright, thank you. Alright, at this time, we'll hear anybody who is opposed to this development. Come on, ma'am.
So start at the ten minutes.
Hi, I'm Sonia Delbridge, Rex, Georgia, I mean, Ellenwood, Georgia. I am confused. Can you tell me where this is exactly?
It's right beside the old Kaufman, you know, where the old Kaufman facility is. It's, it's by a different name now. As you get off six-
It's Treadmax.
Yes, Treadmax. Okay. So, I, I, you know, I'm all for jobs and all of that, but we
still have, would the roads be widened or anything done with the roads? Because it's already overcrowded. So would there be more roads, expansion of roads?
Anytime roads are widened, or there is a proposal for it, you have to do a study on it, and they look at the number of, of vehicles-
Has that been done?
On, on the roadway and so forth.
Well, has that been done?
No, it hasn't. Because there is no existing building there currently. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I can't speak for what's happening in Clayton, but I will tell you, if you, you look at what's going on throughout the state, the state is looking at redirecting traffic in certain directions, and so there may be some information that you could find out on GDOT. And so this is one of the questions that you asked. You could find information about it there. Because of where it's located, right off of six seventy-five, the state is discussing having dedicated traffic for trucks, even more so than two eighty-five. That is exactly where they're putting their emphasis, and it was also discussed at ACCG during the legislative conference. I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
And also, listen, let me add that AR, ARC, they're talking about more truck parking lots, uh, to get those vehicles off the roadway and off the side of the road, so.
Will it have an impact on the senior citizens' building that's going there now?
No, no, it's a long way from there.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Mullins.
Good evening, Donna Mullins, Ellenwood, Georgia. Please, in interest of time, allow me to read. Please don't take it impersonal. Article three, section twenty-nine, which is stated in the application, says that LI should be used in connection with general business. General business is not within fi, two hundred and fifty yards of, of that property. However, it does adjoining residential zoning. For that reason, it should be denied. I had lunch with the applicant, Adam Richards, a while back, and I asked him one simple question. But you want a warehouse in your neighborhood? He told me no. For that reason, it should be denied. The property owner, Anvil Block Property Investments, purchased that property and other properties in two thousand and fourteen under the current PUD zoning, and their choice not to develop that land in accordance with its current zoning should not bring a burden and livability destruction to the other landowners who did choose to develop it. For this reason, the application should be denied. The applicant stated at the ZAG meeting that he had several letters from surrounding property owners. I have seventy-seven signatures from Clayton County citizens in opposition to this. The land where the tire company used to, uh, used to be that Commissioner Gregory referenced on six seventy-fives was owned by Clayton County Development Authority from two thousand and two until two fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, when it was sold to two eighty, two, twenty-eight thirty-two Anvil Block, and then was rezoned and sold to Mark Real Investments. There's adequate HI and LI land to generate all those taxes that y'all are so needing and seeking. There is no reason to zone any other lands until those current zoned HI and LI lands are developed. There's eleven hundred and sixty-eight acres of industrial land at Fort Gillum that will continue to be zoned. The applicant pointed out during the ZAG meeting and tonight that there's already over twenty warehouses within a mile radius of the applicant's property. Kroger has five hundred daily trucks. The EPA reports that eighty-two percent of greenhouse gases and carbon footprint is generated by light and heavy industrial trucks. There's an estimated two thousand trucks that uses exit seven a day already. Idling produces greenhouse gases that contribute to climate change. Until the county improves the surrounding infrastructure to help this, no more HI or LI should be approved, and for this reason, the application should be denied. As reported by the Union of Concerned Scientists, warehousing also takes up large tracts of land, pollute, pollutes the air, damages pavement, creates traffic safety issues and air pollutants, and the exposure of local residents, especially children and elderly people, are very subject to noxious and particulate matter, which causes asthma and respiratory allergies. Warehousing developers search for low rent, low wage, poor labor pool, weak political power, and favorable public policies. Warehouse development continues to increase. Let's seriously take a look at this environmental injustice before we do anything else. For these reasons, it should be denied. The applicant also stated that the abutting property is residential, and, and on the county site, it shows this as being parvifium, and in my best Latin, that means living waters. Every resident on Williamson Road, which the applicant failed to point out, uses wells for our living water. In essence, the runoff in the gas and oil from these tractor trailers would be poisoning our drinking water. Commissioner Gregory, in March of two thousand and nineteen, you, you approved a warehouse on forty-one seventy-nine Dunn Road, saying that it was already zoned heavy industrial. So I hope you'll use that same rationale to deny this one tonight. It is not zoned light industrial, and it should not be. It should be denied. Residents enjoy the same thing that warehouses do. We like the convenience of the airport, easy access to six seventy-five and two eighty-five, fifteen minutes from downtown Atlanta. We also want a place to live, work, and play that the county taunts us with. We have places to live. There are ten thousand five hundred and twenty-nine homes within three-mile radius. We have places to work, although they pay thirteen dollars an hour. We need a place to play and a good place to work. Office space, offices that would generate twenty-one dollars an hour, starting out, real sustainable wage salaries. Really move your county forward. This county, this application should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farmer.
Mr. Farmer, Prairie Community Activist, Clayton County. This gentleman comes up here. We have senior citizens, children from school, and speaks a language we do not understand. You said that you cannot make these businesses do recycle, nor will you ask them. I will ask them, and I would like to know how is his efforts going in the building that he already has? Based on that, and it seems like this, this county, county is not really interested in recycling, nor keeping our county clean as it should be, nor getting money from recycling, which I brung you the receipts, and then y'all write a language that I don't understand. I was called to police and telephone, man. We do not use these languages. Based on that, that application need to be denied.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Lironda Dawson. I reside at forty-six twenty-one Mitchell's Ridge Drive in Ellenwood, and I represent the citizens of Clayton County and Mitchell's Meadow. And my concerns are simple. When we first moved out in this area back seventeen years ago, we were promised retail, high-quality retail restaurants. We were promised things to do with our children, and we've not yet seen that. But instead, what we have seen is a flux of warehouse development being attracted to our county, and which, with all due respect, these applicants don't live in our area, and they wouldn't want, they, they've already said they wouldn't want warehouses built in their areas. We don't want it in our areas. What we want to see is nice, high-quality restaurants. What we want to see is what was promised to us back with the twenty-year comprehensive plan back twenty years ago. Well, I'm sorry, seventeen, seventeen years ago, we were promised a ten-year comprehensive plan, and we have not yet seen it. We have warehouses that are already standing vacant right now that have not been utilized, and we also have space on Fort Gillum that has not been utilized. We have space in the Mountain View area that has not been utilized. Those areas are more suitable for what these applicants are wanting. Anvil Block Road is suitable for our family-oriented restaurants, entertainment, things that we were promised, and that's what we are asking the Board Commissioner. If you would please deny the applicants to build these warehouses in our, in our neighborhoods, and also if you would grant us some of the things that we've asked for back seventeen years ago.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Cheryl Jackson, Clayton County. Don't have time, so I'll just say, if you don't want a warehouse in your neighborhood, please don't put it in ours. We have enough trucks, enough warehouses, terrible roads. We don't need another warehouse in that area. We need the good things that you want in your neighborhoods. That's what we want in ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Time is up for those in opposition. Mr. Buckley, you have two minutes for rebuttal.
Yes, first of all, we don't have a zoning problem. This property is already zoned to allow light industrial uses. What we're asking for is a change in the site plan. That is all we're asking for. This, this is not changing the zoning. The property to the north of us is zoned residential. That property owner, along with eighteen others along Anvil Block Road, have signed support letters for our application, which we have just handed up to you. In addition, back in two thousand and thirteen, the county hired Georgia Tech to write its Strategic Economic Development Plan- During that strategic planning process, which took place over the course of nine months, Georgia Tech met with hundreds of county residents as well as institutional stakeholders. And out of that planning process, one of their recommendations was to prioritize workforce development as a key economic development tool, and specifically to expand career pathways in the logistic industry as well as the logistics base in the county. In response to that report, Clayton State University has created a degree program in logistics in their Bachelor of Business Administration program. They also have partnered with Atlanta Career Wise to create a certificate program. We have often heard the Commissioner for this district, Commissioner Gregory, say that she is fighting for jobs for her constituents. I have offered up a proposed zoning condition that would require the prospective end-user of this facility to partner with Clayton State University as well as Atlanta Career Wise in order to create a linkage between the residents who are being trained to take these jobs, both at an entry level and a management level, and put them in touch with the folks doing the hiring, which would address what she's been trying to do all this time. And finally, if you look at the comprehensive plan, one of the specific policies is for Clayton County to partner with Atlanta Savannah to increase logistics in the.
Your time is up, sir. Are there any questions for the board members? Mr. Davis, I think you had a question for him.
I did. Would trucks be allowed on this 24 hours? You said it would increase. I said up to 55, so about a truck and a half an hour. So this is 24-hour, heavy 18-wheel truck?
I have Adam Richards with me from Amble Block Partners, and he can answer questions about operations more competently than I can.
Sure. Chairman, Board, thank you for having me. Adam Richards with Reliant Real Estate Partners. To answer your question, we won't exactly know who the end-user is until the building is built and leased. Generally, most of the truck activity, which is a good thing, is after the busy hours of the day. And so, you know, you will often find that many of these trucks load early and leave early so that they don't encounter busy roads. But yes, they could potentially come at night or, you know, any time during the day. That's just going to be an operational decision.
Also.
Can't hear?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Also, and I guess this is for community development, when do we do impact studies on roads before buildings are built?
Depending on the size of the. The A R C has a trigger that will require a threshold for a DRI. This project is just under the threshold. That only requires them to do a traffic study. The actual improvements, and they make recommendations in terms of what type of road improvements need to occur. And then it's up to the local government to enforce the enactment of those improvements. In this case, there are no recommendations from A R C or DCA, the Department of Community Affairs, in regards to a transportation study. So it's only incumbent upon the jurisdiction to make a determination if there's any additional lanes needed or any signalization required. That would be at the recommendation of the local government.
Okay, I have two more, which is, I guess for basic information, can you define the difference between light industrial and heavy industrial usage?
Mostly, heavy industrial entails more mainly manufacturing-type uses and processing uses where there may be heavy chemical processing, or there may be the use of large warehouses that may emit certain environmental things that are more heavy. Light industrial is purely the basic operations of typically warehousing and distribution uses and uses that support the generally occupied, large pieces of land in order, like lumberyards and things like that, for outdoor storage. That's primarily light industrial.
And do we still have control over what goes on that development as far as the aesthetics of a building or anything of that nature?
Absolutely. And certainly we have what we refer to as the overlay district that provides some basic requirements for architectural standards. But as a conditional element, the government authority can make recommendations as to additional screening requirements, how additional type of treatments that they want the building to have in terms of access, the orientation of the bays, the loading bays could be addressed. So yes, as a conditional element, we can introduce any type of conditions that we think mitigates impacts on the development.
Any other questions?
Yes. You mentioned, well, there's been some questions about the jobs, or you've also mentioned the jobs that it's going to bring. And you have no idea at this time, obviously, who's going to occupy the building or what company. But would you say that the type of jobs that this building will be designed for, is that going to lend more towards the lower-in-paying jobs, mid-range, or higher?
I think that it will have both the lower entry-level positions, and it will also have the upper management-level positions as well.
Okay, please, we're not going to have any outbursts. Please, I will remind the, okay, I will remind those speakers to make sure you speak clearly into the mic.
And in terms of the quality of the jobs in the industry that are being represented by the development that we are proposing, I mentioned the Strategic Economic Development Plan that the county has adopted, and it, again, has specifically identified logistics as one of the high-wage industries in Clayton County, which is why it recommended an expansion of that industry in the county.
Okay, my other question is probably more of a statement, unfortunately, than a question. But what assurance can we have, and I believe that the citizens are, it's a fair statement or question to ask, what assurance do we have that this place is not going to be left empty as some of the others are?
Sure, and I'd just like to clarify one thing, just from a job standpoint. This area of Clayton County is really one of the leaders in new jobs. Over the last 12 months, there have been approximately 1,200 new jobs. And I know people keep mentioning the building down the street is vacant. It is actually leased to FedEx Ground, and that's approximately 375 new jobs. And I really do think there's a misconception about these jobs. And you see signs up at facilities. I took a picture the other day. I was out in Douglasville at a facility called Coloplast. It's a medical device warehouse and office facility. And they have an air-conditioned warehouse, and they are paying people $17 to $20 an hour to work in this facility. There's a huge demand for this type of labor. Companies like Amazon and several other companies have started air conditioning their warehouses just to pull employees from other companies. Luxottica, who owns Sunglass Hut, does the same thing. They just leased another facility down in Henry County that's about 300,000 square feet, and they air-condition it. And they play music throughout the warehouse, just to, I mean, to try to have one more incentive to pull an employee from another company. So I'm sorry not to.
No, that was good.
Veer from your question.
Yeah, but one more, if it's okay.
Yep.
I did notice in the video that the design allowed for maybe some office space as well. I know that was another question, and I just want to know, what percentage do you feel would be office space provided?
Well, I think there's another misconception there. I would say that on average, most buildings of this size will have around 5% office, which would be, you know.
5%?
Yeah, 10,000 to 15,000 square feet of office. Put that in perspective. We keep talking about warehouses and all these distribution facilities that are off of this exit. But if each one of those buildings has between 5 and 15,000 square feet of office, you actually do have an office market here. You have several hundred thousand, if not more than a million, square feet of office space just at this exit, between HD Supply, who just created 375 jobs at Gillum. You've got Cummins, who created 75 new jobs at Gillum. Kroger, 410, these have office space in. So I would estimate between, you know, 5% or so, which are 10,000 to 15,000 square feet in this building.
Any other questions? All right, here, Commissioner Gregory.
Mr. Chair, one of the things I wanted to clarify, the first lady that spoke, not the first lady, but there are not any truck stops on Amble Block. And also, I just want to mention too, a lot of times, you know, when we say warehouse, I know people create these images of a smokestack and something old and so forth or whatever. But as, you know, as we move forward today with the e-commerce and online shopping, you know, brick-and-mortar retail constantly closing out, it doesn't matter what area. You know, and I wish everybody in Clayton County was qualified to make $30 an hour. I know people, you know, they say, well, you're just 13, just 14, just $15 an hour. After the meeting Saturday, you know, I sat for 30 minutes and talked with a young lady who had lost her job as a bus monitor and telling me she can't pay her taxes, and all she wants is just the job. And so, and I run into this every day. And again, as elected officials, we hear this, y'all. People need jobs. And again, everybody's not qualified for the $30 an hour jobs that we have. Right now, you know, FedEx has occupied the current building that you know is there. This building is only 1,000 feet from I-675. And as an elected official, again, the people in this community need jobs. And also, what we're adding to our tax base and our revenue for the county. And with that, Mr. Chair, I offer a motion to approve this petition.
Or is there a second?
Second.
We are not going to have, hold on, hold on, hold on. We're not going to do that. We're not going to have any outbursts. Please be respectful. No, sir, sit down. No, sir. We are not going to have any outbursts. All right, it was properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second. Any other questions or statements?
I just wish that we can have one more stipulation, even though you're going to propose to partner with the universities. What we tend to find is a lot of corporations do bring people in from other areas, and they may not reside here. I just wish this board could figure out a way that when we're working on things such as this, and the zoning is already there, that we can find a way to get our workforce strategically positioned to where those that are working in those areas live in our area. That's the only statement I want to make. That are making those higher positions, instead of just floating them in and then giving us the others.
All right, any other questions, comments rather? All right, here, and those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
I just want to clarify that there was no conditions added to that.
There was no conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Next, hold on a second, Madam Clerk. If you are leaving, let's do it as quietly as possible, please. Let's leave quietly as possible, please. All right, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
The next item is D, rezoning 1908-00024 is the rezoning from general business to light industrial district.
Ms. Pam.
The applicant of Southeastern Engineering, on behalf of, is that the right, I'm sorry. Which case number we're on, I'm sorry. The applicant is Mark Whitley of Whitley Engineering, on behalf of Farron Thong, is requesting a rezoning from GB, General Business District, to light industrial to allow a paved truck parking to accommodate approximately 509 tractor-trailer trucks and five automobile parking spaces. The subject property is located on Highway 42 and has approximately 21 acres and has frontage on Highway 42 of 1,006 to 5 feet. The staff recommendation is that this request be tabled. The applicant has submitted a letter requesting this be tabled. The rezoning does trigger a change to the comprehensive plan land use map designation in order to recognize the industrial zoning should the rezoning be approved. The recommendation of the zoning advisory group was for denial.
Yes, sir, you're the applicant.
Mark Whitley, Whitley Engineering, 38 East Main Street, North Hampton, Georgia.
Are you asking for this item to be tabled?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, we're asking for it to be tabled, and we'd like to see it tabled to the December meeting. My understanding, when we submitted the petition for rezoning, we didn't realize that the future land use map also needed to be amended, so that application was not submitted. We have now submitted that application, but it would take about two months for it to catch up to your meeting again in December, so that both of those petitions could be heard at the same time.
And the meeting in December would be? December 17th. Okay, so the applicant's requesting that this item be tabled until December 17th, you said?
Yes, sir.
Do we need a motion on it?
Yes, ma'am.
So.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is item E, BOC 1908-0001 subdivision, plant modification within the existing Spivey Village subdivision.
The request is the applicant of Julian Shelby, on behalf of Pompey Enterprises, is requesting a zoning modification within the existing Spivey Village subdivision. The request is to reduce the rear yard setback from 30 feet to nine feet, and a side yard setback of 15 feet to nine feet, in order to allow the construction of a new single-family dwelling. The property address is 1933 Spivey Village Circle, Jonesburg, Georgia. The subject property is actually lot 623 of that subdivision. The property is currently zoned PUD, Plan Unit Development. Any site plan changes or adjustments to the conditions of the PUD requires a modification before the Board of Commissioners. Staff recommendation is for approval. The zoning advisory group recommendation is also for approval.
All right, sir, if you would state your name and whether or not you would want to reserve any minutes at the end for rebuttal.
Reserve the remaining minutes. My name is Julian.
No, 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 I need you to tell me how many minutes. The standard has been about two.
It's not going to take long.
Sub to you, though.
We have two minutes.
We'll just say two minutes.
Okay.
Reserving two minutes.
My name is Julian Selby. I am the co-owner of Restored Vision LLC. Also recommending, representing Pompey Enterprises. We have purchased the last remaining lots, 21 lots in Spivey Village, which is a 55 and over community. We looked at the master plan before we made the purchases. On this particular lot, there were two sides that did not have setbacks already put down. So the house that we were projected to put there seemed like it would work. Once we filed for the permit, we learned that a modification is needed, and this is why I'm here today. Is to get the, you know, the setbacks as far as to allow, mainly because they was not there. Two sides did not exist on the master plan.
Okay, is there anybody here who want to speak in favor of this applicant's request? Anyone want to speak in favor? Okay, anyone like to speak in opposition to it? Anyone against it? Hearing none. Commissioner Davis?
I recommend that we go ahead and approve. This is stated.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is F, BOC 1908-0006. The applicant is requesting CUP to allow adult daycare center.
The applicant is Arnold Ruffing, requesting a conditional use permit at an existing place of worship. The request is to allow an adult daycare center to operate within the confines of the existing place of worship. The property is located at 1915 Rock Cut Place. The subject property is of 2.9 acres in size. The recommendation from staff is to deny. The staff recommendation is based on the fact of how the code is worded. It addresses educational facilities as a conditional use permit in residential areas that could fall under a place of worship. However, the adult daycare center is not a reference use under the conditional use permit. the adult daycare center has, is not a reference use under the, uh, conditional use permit. So that's, representative staff recommendation is for denial. The zoning advisory group recommendation is for approval.
Switz, state your name.
Yep. My name is Arnold Ruffin. I'm the.
Ruffin.
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 Yeah, like David Ruffin.
And Jimmy.
Yeah. I'm the pastor of Solid Rock Sanctuary at this particular.
Yes. How many minutes would you like to reserve?
Uh, two minutes.
Okay.
Reserving two minutes.
Um, in two thousand twelve, we, uh, acquired the, the property there, uh, for a place of worship. And when we acquired the property, uh, we came before the, uh, the board for a continuous permit for, and daycare. And we were approved. And in two thousand and eighteen, we decided to go to an adult day center. And we came before, uh, the zoning and, uh, we got it approved, uh, I believe it was May. It was in May. And it was operating for an entire year. Um, when the businesses was in it left, uh, the zoning came up again. And somewhere along the line, there had been some miscommunication between daycare, child daycare, and adult daycare. But when we came before the zoning in two thousand and eighteen, uh, we wanted to change it from an adult days, from a daycare to an adult day center. We did get the sign off on it, but when this, when this came up, when the business, the previous business bees left, uh, the zoning issue came up. Um, I personally, only thing I see different between an adult day center and a child daycare would be the age. Uh, I believe that we're in a residential area that's kind of commercial because there's a goat farm around the church. And then we're right, right off of forty-two where all of the trucks go. We're gonna be serving elderly and it's gonna be from the hours of, from eight to around two to three. They'll be, they'll come in through vans. Um, and also we did, I checked, and I'm, I'm gonna let, uh, some of those that are with me, but we have some evidence from the Atlanta where they approved, um, adult day center in a residential area and also in the Union City area. We're just trying to serve the, uh, elderly with adult day center. Uh, it was previously approved by the state. Uh, it's up the code for, uh, with the county and the state had approved it. We want to get the zoning back so, uh, we can get a license and, uh, business license and operate within the specifics of the situation.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Thompson. I'm the executive director for Metro Resource Center. We have had a adult daycare in Atlanta for over thirty years. And, um, the Division of Aging has encouraged, um, providers to move outside of Fulton County area, the Atlanta area, because it's oversaturated with programs for seniors. They encouraged us to try to seek a property or something around in the surrounding counties. So seeking that Conley, I didn't even find in another, another adult day program. So, um, we partnered with the church and thought that we was going to have that vision there. And, um, they had some problems with, um, daycare and child daycare or adult and child daycare. So I know we've done it in Atlanta and I recently went over to Union City to ask them what is their requirements. They said they would, they would do it in, uh, Union City as a special use, uh, permit, even if it is in a residential area, as long as it's not another adult daycare or child daycare within two thousand square feet. Um, we just want to continue. I've been a nurse for thirty-three years and I am committed to helping seniors. And we need more of daycare services for them. And if anyone doesn't know what daycare services are, we provide meals, uh, oversight from nurses, nurses aides, and we are there for respite when, just say if you was caring for your grandmother or your mother and you had to go to work, you need to leave mom or dad in a safe place by oversight, by nurses, CNA's, and that sort. They don't have that in Conley and we would like to bring that to Conley area. We would be licensed by the Department of Community Health and, um, we have, um, providers for Medicaid, Source, and CCSP. So we would be able to have some of the case managers to broker clients in the Clayton County area in which they say that they are underserved and they need this service.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone like to speak?
Excuse me. Good evening again. Uh, Gail Davenport, and I represent this district. I did not know that was on the agenda for tonight, but I see it is. Uh, I, I have not looked at the subject property. I just know Ms. Miriam Thompson from the Metro Resource Center. I was on that board for about five or ten years when it was at Ebenezer Baptist Church in Atlanta. And I can say that she does an excellent job in taking care of those seniors and having a place for them. They have caseworkers, case managers that are there. They have meals for them. It is always approved by the state. Uh, uh, I can just vouch for her, her integrity and the way she treats seniors. Um, I have not seen the, the property, but the pastor is here, Reverend.
Ruffin.
Yeah, Reverend Ruffin.
[laughing]
And, uh, I, I am sure that this is something that the county needs and they would take care of our seniors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott?
Good afternoon again. I too stand in support of the seniors daycare center because we do need one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Anybody else want to speak, uh, in favor? All right. Seeing, hearing none. Anybody would like to speak in opposition to? Anyone want to speak in opposition? Any board member have any questions for the applicants?
I, well, it's not really for the applicants, but if maybe Ms. Spann or Mr. GK can explain to me, you said staff recommendation, staff recommended denial, given the district's standards, do not support this use?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's somewhat of a technicality or the lack of, of defined terms. Place of worship in some jurisdictions, in some cases are, is defined broadly and it encompasses education, recreation, things that you typically associate with a place of worship. Our code does not address those as ancillary uses or acknowledge the fact that you can have these type of uses under the church umbrella. The interpretation that that was, that, again, some of this has to be assumption because we're passing down interpretations from, from, uh, ZAs, from zoning administrators on down and also through legal. And that is that, uh, a daycare which was approved as, under CUP in twenty, I think twenty thirteen, that was obviously interpreted under education. Education is a conditional use permit in a residential area. So the daycare center was approved of CUP. Now we have a change in use to an adult daycare. We don't recognize adult daycare in the same vein as an educational facility. So without, we haven't a defined, a defined term in the code that gives us that umbrella of ancillary uses, we kind of have to go with the very technical interpretation of the code. And that is, the only thing that's allowed in a residential area is a place of worship, educational uses, and other uses such as, you know, boarding houses and other things like that, that do require conditional permits under, so it's really a code technicality, uh, was the reason staff had to deny because there is no avenue under condition, under the RES one-ten district that says a adult daycare is a conditional use in that district.
So, so Mr. Reed, I guess I'm just having a hard time. If that's the situation and it's still, but we still can vote on this item?
Um, when a item is brought to you, you have to make a decision. The, what Ms. Spann was basically saying is that the code does not allow this type of use in this particular zoning district, but it's before you. So you have to make a decision on the application that's before you.
Do we, does the board encounter any kind of, you know, liability? Do we take on anything if we?
Well, certainly it would be very unusual to say the least to vote on a use that you do not authorize in your zoning district.
Yes.
Vote in favor of a use that you do not authorize in your zoning district.
So, is, can we bring, you know, the, the code back to correct the code before we vote on this? I, I'm just, I'm just kind of uncomfortable and, um, you know, Reverend Ruffin, you know, you're doing awesome job up there in Conley. But I, I, it's kind of like we putting, you know, the cart before the horse.
Before the horse.
Right here. And I'm just a little bit uncomfortable. You know, our, our staff members, they are the experts in this. And with this recommendation of denial, I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable right now until we have the code corrected.
Well, what I hear you saying is maybe we can just table it until it's, uh, time.
Yes.
Until another time in which we can bring it back after this board takes a look at the code.
And also I would like to ask, um, since the, you know, this is a, a, a business of the church, is this gonna be taxed as a business or how does that work as a?
That's a good question.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if it were to pass, I'm just asking. I know I'm jumping ahead now.
Metro Resource.
But maybe Mr., I, I don't mean to call you out, Rodney, maybe he can share something, Mr. Chair, but I don't know. Or?
Well, hold on. I, I think that's a discussion we can have at a later time. But right now, are you agreeing to table it until we can bring it back at a later?
I really want to table it because when we came before zoning in two thousand and eighteen, they signed off on it. Okay? They signed off on it. We operated already for a year. This is a, there, what is the difference between children and seniors? We, we want to get up, start to serve the seniors. We have seniors from the time that the zoning issue came up that are scattered and some of them are still home. And we want to get back. So we, we're trying to follow the procedure. And we felt that the board would at least consider by us already operating for one year. And we have been licensed by the state. It's a technical issue. And if we table it, this is gonna be another month or another two months. We want to get up and running. We were already running. We were serving them. But there was, when the previous, uh, uh, business moved out, this zoning issue come up. I thought we had this, this, thought we had it settled in two thousand and eighteen. And you should have the record, I have it, where they sign off on it. I went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And we thought it was correct. So it wasn't on our part and we're trying to do it correctly. All we want to do is have a continuous use permit so we can continue to operate.
May I please, um, ask a couple of questions? And I'm gonna preference it with this. And all due respect, I hear all the commissioners. But as a commissioner, over fifteen years ago, I was in the same boat that you were in. So I've dealt with the state and I know what's allowed by the state because I was that person working out of Shiloh. My first question to you is, what are your hours of operation?
From eight to two.
That's the first one. So she's, you're within the stipulations. The second question is, do you have your personal business license that the church is allowing you for use of their facility? Or do you not have a personal business license?
I'm not in there yet. There was a previous adult daycare center that, uh, adult daycare left and I sought to start an adult daycare since it already was one. And that's where we, uh, ran into that. But I've had, uh, business license, uh, previous.
So then my question would be for pastor. This, um, this arrangement that you have, whether this is approved by the board or not, what are your arrangements to allow for this to take place in your, in your church? Do they have a separate business license? Are you requiring that? Are they coming under the umbrella of the services offered by the church? Simple?
Real simple. If we, if we get this approved, then she can apply for the license. The reason she cannot get the license because it's not zoned, we don't have the continuous use permit. If we get the continuous permit, she will, she will get her own license.
I would, okay. I thank you so very much for that. And again, in all sincerity and all respect, I would urge our legal to look deeply into it because what we could do is find ourselves in a place where we're violating what the state allows this church to already do. And regardless of what our ordinances say. And I'm only speaking of that because I have personally been in that situation out of Shiloh Baptist Church for over fifteen, it was probably nineteen years ago to be exact. So I don't know what the law states now. But if it's zoned for a church, regardless of our zoning, they're allowed to utilize their church in the manner in which it's able to be used as authorized through the state, whether it's daycare of adult or children, as long as it's within a certain operating hour. So we need to do our due diligence as a board and that's the only thing I want to lend to the conversation.
Commissioner Gregory, you have a recommendation?
Well, first of all, I'm going to go back to Ms. Spann and Mr. GK again, uh, given what Commissioner Franklin Warner just brought up. Could they operate under the state guidelines right now until we have our codes, um, corrected or changed or so forth? I understand that, you know, the urgency, Reverend, I, that you want to get operating and so forth.
The code, excuse me. The, the state's code, I, it's one thing. The way our code reads, the issue is that our code never defined adult daycare. The services are different. Uh, that's one. Two, we're going to look and see if, because I'm not sure about what Commissioner just referenced, that is state code trumps county code outright.
I didn't say it then. I said we need to look into it.
State law does.
Yeah, yeah.
State law does.
Yeah, still, yeah, yeah. So the idea becomes is, there are instances where in my night, well, we're gonna find out from legal. I'm not sure if legal is able to answer that. Well, let me kind of offer you a clarification because the issue, before, I'm sorry, before you answer. The issue came up as to they have been operating and all of a sudden we're saying no. It didn't quite happen that way. They were, they were approved for child daycare and education. They started approving. The issue came up was when they wanted to change the business. During the business license review, it's when we found that it was adult daycare. And I was actually personally involved. And I said, wait a minute. This is what the code said in two thousand, I think, eleven or so when it, um, was approved. So we started looking at the code. The only place, Clayton County Code references adult and child daycare is in GB. That's the only place it referenced that is in GB. So the issue is, um, we are willing to look that immediately to make sure what the commissioner referenced and make sure what we really do. Um, legal can chairman and?
Generally, state law does not tell a county, you must put something in an area contrary to your zoning code. They give home, they give counties the right to designate where things should be laid out within their zoning code. Currently, our zoning code does not allow adult daycare in this particular zoning classification. And so, um, I certainly be looking, well, you know, willing to look at that, but it would be extremely, it'd be as unusual as the, as this board voting on and, uh, to use a property that's contrary to zoning code as the state saying you must put a use in a zone, in an area that is contrary to your zoning code. Those just do not happen. Uh, that would be very, very unusual for that to happen. Um, and so I'm not discounting that it, cannot, I'm just saying it is very unusual. And I'm not familiar with the state requiring a business to go in an area that's contrary to your local zoning areas.
If I may bring a point of clarification. My statement was not based upon whether you're gonna zone a business or not. That was not it. And that's why I said we needed to look into it. I never said that one trumps the other. I never said that. I just said that because of my personal experiences and. I never said that one trumps the other, I never said that, I just said that because of my personal experiences and my personal knowledge, I know that it's already zoned for church use. So I would pose the question to be entertained is can we then dictate to the church what services they can offer? That is the question more than the zoning of the business. And that's why I specifically asked, were you gonna have a separate business license? Or was it gonna be a service offered underneath the church? Again, I also preference that this was many years ago. I only caution the board to make sure that as our legal representative, that we do everything that we can to ensure that we're not violating anybody's rights. Because the church is already zoned, they're there. What we're basically saying is church, you can't offer adult daycare services is what we're gonna take into consideration here. That's really one of the questions I'm looking at, but that's just a question, simple as that.
Isn't, but isn't this a legal issue?
That's why I asked him to look into it.
I guess with Commissioner Gregory, to approve, where do we put ourselves? But also to deny, where do we put them in timeframe for them to bring this back up?
If you deny, then they have to wait a year before they can reapply.
So if we just, if we, can we ho- hold it, Mr. GK? And again, you know, work on the code so that we could both get it on.
Uh, yes, if it's the wish of the board, we can defy.
It's the wish of the applicant, if the applicant wants to table it, then we can hold it.
Well, uh, we can.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, he wanted a decision to date it.
Go find out what the, um, uh, uh, the legalese are in terms of getting this done. And Mr. Chairman, if you allow me, Commissioner, I apologize, I misinterpreted your statement.
It's okay.
So, uh, I misunderstood your statement, but we can certainly hold it and work on it to make sure we're not violating, um, annual codes.
Mr. Um, Mr. Chair, I, I'd like to ask if they would allow us to hold it, and Mr. Chair, if you would just demand the community development, get on top of this ASAP real quick now.
I think, I think they're clear on what the direction would be if the applicant wants to hold it. So Mr. Ruffman, what is your, what is your, your pleasure?
I understand your situation Reverend.
When you say hold, how long we hold?
Hold it until we can get it corrected, and hopefully we can do it within the next couple of months or so.
Okay, the only problem, excuse me, I have a Medicaid provider number. And if you don't use your, um, Medicaid provider number, then I will lose, um, my provider standards. So, waiting and then someone saying a couple of months and it may go to a year. You know, I have, uh, you know, I will lose my clientele as well, so.
So what are you saying? You want us to move forward with it or not?
I, as soon as possible, but if it goes into months.
How, how long is your certification for?
Um, twelve months. And I've been closed right now for what, three, three months?
So you have what?
What, nine months, however, I do have, uh, clients that we have moved from, uh, Atlanta. So then that means that they will be brokered to, um, other places in Atlanta. And which DCH is kind of wanting us to start serving the outer communities. Um, I'm sure they may not know all of these difficulties that, um, we would have faced, you know. But some of the other union city, you know, stated that it wasn't a problem even in a residential area. And I got that paperwork today, um, and Atlanta, of course, that's why they're oversaturated. So we just need to, if it's not for me and my business to change the ordinance because people are getting older and these services are needed.
And listen, we understand your plight, okay?
Okay.
So the only thing I can say is that we will move expeditiously as possible. I'm not, I'm not guaranteeing you or promising you that we can get it done two, three, four months. I think we can get it done quickly, especially if there's not much needed on our end to change anything. Or if the state regulations allows you to have it, we can make sure that we bring y'all back before us. But I think it's in your benefit to give us an opportunity to make it right. Cause at another day, that's what we want, we want to make sure we're doing it the right way.
Correct, definitely, I would hate to start something and have to end it, yes.
So with that being said, do you agree to table this item?
Yes, we have no other choice.
What can we do?
You're the applicant, sir, I need you to say it on, on the record.
All right, we, we'll, uh, we'll give you a few weeks. We'll, we'll let you hold it. We'll hold it, we'll hold it.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Gregory, make a motion.
Our motion to, uh, table this item until we.
Can bring it back.
I'm sorry, Chair.
You need to table to a date certain, you can't have an indefinite table.
Well, let's shoot for, um, December, December, what was it, nineteenth or seventeen? December seventeen.
Sure, offer motion to table until December seventeenth?
There is a.
Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose.
Second.
Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose.
And Chairman, can I, can I also say that we really need to begin to address our aging population needs? Our Alzheimer's center is in, is in dire need of funding and resources as well as some of our other aging services.
I think everybody on the board agrees with that, uh, thank you very much.
I would like to add, I'm, with that, we need to look into the ARC and find out, they, well, they already have that information. A great portion of our population is aging and we need to look at that as we're.
They just did a study on that, that they put out last week, so.
Just need to share, that's all I was stating.
Absolutely, next.
Next item is G, which is CUP nineteen oh five, that's zero, zero, twenty-six conditional use permit to allow the construction of a new hundred and twenty-five monopole cell tower.
Ms. Fane.
The applicant's Tower, is Tower Come LLC, on the behalf of Faith Deliverance Christian Church, Inc. Is requesting a conditional use permit within the O-N-I office institutional district to allow the construction of a new hundred and twenty-five foot cell tower. The applicant has submitted a letter requesting withdrawal of this request.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Who is this on?
Motion to accept the withdrawal.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, it's unanimous, next.
Next item is H, CUP nineteen oh two, zero, zero, seventeen, to allow a convenience store with gas, gasoline sales.
Ms. Fane.
This is a request of Clipper Petroleum to allow a, a convenience store with gas pumps at the intersection of Kendrick and Highway one thirty-eight. This property is located in the Highway one thirty-eight overlay district, currently zoned GB. The, um, the applicant, the applicant for this is Clipper Petroleum. Staff recommendation was for denial and the zoning advisory group recommendations from denial. This request was heard by the zoning advisory group in April, has been, this has been on the table, on the board commissioner's table since that time as the applicant, and the community has been working through some developmental issues and site concerns. So this hearing today is an advertised public hearing that was from a tabled item that occurred in April.
Ms. Battle?
Good evening Commissioners, Michelle Battle with Battle Law here representing the applicant. Um, we are, um, still very excited about this particular project. Um, we believe that Clipper, which is a, uh, class A convenience store operator, um, will have an opportunity to build a store which will service, um, the community. Um, with respect to the, um, project as proposed, um, we are looking at developing a five thousand, um, square foot facility.
And Ms. Battle, not to interrupt you, but I'm assuming you want two minutes for rebuttal.
Sure.
Sure, thank you, appreciate.
I want to talk fast. Um, um, we're looking at a, um, five thousand square foot facility, um, which will be at the intersection, um, of Kendrick and, um, one thirty-eight. Sorry, Kendrick and one thirty-eight. Uh, we've got the canopy, um, located in the front of the property, um, with the gas station and a, um, diesel base to the rear. And what the intent here is, is we'll have ten pump stations that will be located up front, um, with two pump stations which will be diesel in the back. Those diesel stations will simply be for, um, like box trucks or landscaping type folks, um, so that we can get them out of the flow of the general traffic in order, um, to allow for the facility to flow better, um, and for safety purposes. Um, this facility will be unlike any of the others in the community in that, um, it will provide for, um, coffee stations. They will have, you know, clean restrooms, they'll have, um, a myriad of food and beverage items, um, that will be available. I don't like to make comparisons amongst, um, gasoline, uh, service station providers, but I would certainly put them into the class of, uh, the QTs, the racetracks and Clipper. Those are the top three, um, providers, um, within the industry and they really set a standard for what you see, um, coming. Um, with regards to the actual facility, um, we do have some elevations that we have provided to staff. Um, you can see that, um, it'll be, um, more neutral tones with, um, stone features and wood. Um, and the store will again be, um, five thousand square feet. You may have, uh, been in a Clipper store, for example, out near, um, Perimeter Mall. Um, there's one in front of, um, the Alons, um, that is very well received as well. Um, we are looking again to address, um, the issues that have been raised by staff. Um, we believe that this is an appropriate use, um, the CUP is permissible under the, um, GB, um, zoning designation that is in place on this property. Um, this particular area, um, has been slated, uh, for mixed use. Um, but when you look at the MIX, um, land use designation, um, most of the uses under the table are no longer, um, even in the zoning ordinance. Um, and we don't believe that the underlying land use is, um, necessary to dictate what can be developed on the property in the sense that, um, this property has been zoned, uh, GB, um, for, I believe, over thirty years. Um, this property has remained vacant for thirty years. We would like, um, to allow for the development of one point nine four acres of it for the convenience store. And then the balance of the property, um, will, um, ultimately be redeveloped as well, or developed as well. And we have left, um, a curb cut, um, and driveway entrance here that would allow for the, um, final development of the balance of the property um, under the, uh, GB land use, I'm sorry, under the GB zoning designation. So with that, we would respectfully request approval. We have had, um, a couple of community meetings, um, we sent out notices, we did not get a lot of folks that came out, but, uh, we were there, we were present. And we have been, uh, trying to work with both the staff and, uh, Commissioner Davis with regards to, um, the site and some of the issues and questions that have been raised with regards to it. Um, again, we would respectfully request approval.
Good, thank you, does anybody want to speak, uh, in favor of, yes, Mr. Hand?
Well, I got it corrected.
Amen.
I am Roy Hand from Fayette County, I live in one thirty-one Allenwood Road. I want to thank the county most especially for when I get a county zoning planning. I've always had it on time, you've been doing this for almost twenty years, I've been, I was born here in Clayton County. I was a snotty-nosed boy, played over yonder on the corner, he's trying to get zoned here. And I am here to speak in his behalf because I have property across the street is not, it's zoned residential at one time. And that's a commercial, uh, zoning when, uh, county change, all zoning on one thirty-eight, both sides. You didn't do nothing to rip me up good, I'm paying high taxes now, where it used to be eighteen hundred dollars, now I'm paying fifty-four hundred dollars. I met with Mr. Davis and the man that wanted to do this at Riverdale, they sent out invitations for fifteen to thirteen. Well, only one showed up was me, I am in favor of this, I need to get this piece of property sold. I've had it for twenty-five years, I paid big bucks for it, I was going to develop it, but, uh, you got older, you know what I mean? Time flies, so I'm just asking you to give this man a consideration to go on and get this thing started. I'd really like to see it built because I'd like to see them two rat holes away on both sides of the street, the filling station, fold up because it ain't nothing but a trap, you go in there and all they sell is lottery tickets, beer, and don't even sweep the floors. I'm in favor of this, so please consider this, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all, thank you, Mr. Turner, know you well.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of, anybody in opposition? Please come forward.
Good evening, I live in the community, I didn't get any invitation to anything.
State your name for me.
My name is Marcia Stevenson, I've been in Clayton County for several years. I've been in that particular area, my house is about three houses down from the proposed location. I would have liked to have seen what was shown to the board with respect to the development of the property.
Ma'am, you can, you can see that afterward, right now, address the board.
I was just, I was just bringing that up, I'm sorry. In any case, um, I didn't receive any information about any community meetings about the proposal. My concern is the school, that's a little bit down the street. My concern is the influx of traffic on that corner. Um, now, I agree that those two gas stations in the area are pretty, um, terrible. So we would be looking forward to having something, but my concerns are, um, what type of traffic, what type of, is it, how, what are the hours? Is it gonna be twenty-four hours, cause the locations that are there now, they close at about eleven or twelve? There's a lot of foot traffic to those stores. So my concerns are, number one, the school, how much traffic is it gonna be? Um, how, how big of an area is it gonna consume? I understand what you're saying in terms of the, um, acreage, but that's a whole lot of space that's wooded. And I like that, that the way that it is. So I'm, I'm not directly opposed in saying it might not be a good idea, I just, I have some questions about it. Um, just some general questions about the logistics of it.
Thank you, ma'am, anybody else want to speak in opposition? Ms. Battle, you have two minutes.
Um, I just want to clarify that with regards to the site plan, um, you can see, oh, well, something just went up in front of me, so I guess I'll hold it back up again. Oh, there it goes again, all right, so, um, again, we are not developing the entire track for, um, the convenience store. Um, we are providing for the buffer that is required along the perimeter. Um, and then any future development, uh, will have to abide by that same buffer requirement. Um, for right now, um, that area behind would, um, continue to remain wooded. Um, with regards to, um, hours of operation, um, we are looking to operate twenty-four hours. However, um, again, the quality of the facility, um, will be such that, um, we believe that it will be a much safer environment, um, for the community residents um, as well as for any children who are walking along that path. We know that kids like to go to the convenience store, um, pick up some candy after school or whatever. Um, much better to go into a safer environment, um, that we, um, believe we will be providing within, um, this particular facility as opposed to some of the other stores where, um, there may be some, I, I, I can't talk about any other operator. But the bottom line is, we want to make sure that we have a clean, safe, uh, environment that really services the community, um, in a very, um, upscale manner in comparison to what, um, has currently been provided within the community. Um, there hasn't been a lot of new development in this area, um, for in excess of twenty years. Um, and, uh, the homes that have been there, have been in this community for twenty, and I think, uh, the gas stations have been there for longer than thirty years and they have not been upgraded, there's been no improvements. We've got a, um, self-storage facility that located down the street. Um, but in terms of new development, we believe that this will help spur some positive things that will continue to come along this area including, uh, the continued development of this particular site, thank you.
So my question is, will the lighting at the location be all the way around the store? Um, how well lit will it be?
Right, it will be well lit, um, it will be downward facing lighting, however, um, so there's not, um, providing any glare off to the homes, um, to the rear, um, or to the side.
Okay, any other questions?
And also as far as sidewalks?
There will be sidewalks on both sides, um, we will have, um, sidewalk, street curb and gutter along both, um, one thirty-eight and, uh, along Kendrick Road as well.
Any other questions? Commissioner Davis?
Th- this area of Riverdale has been grossly neglected for years. And we have a couple of stations that, um, need some work. And we've got to begin to figure out how we're gonna revitalize this area. Also to, I forget her name, we did have two meetings, we'd asked TND to actually put out more signs than they usually do, um, for those meetings. So I apologize that you didn't, you didn't see those though. But because of this, I think, um, we should approve this, move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, because that area abuts District Three. And I will say that there are quite a few gas stations on that road of Highway one thirty-eight of that stretch. And so that is a concern for me, regardless of the state they're in. I think we have to readjust our zoning and codes and, um, code enforcement to deal with that. We need to look at some ways to deal with that, but I know, I have received some calls about it.
But I know, I have received some calls about it, and, um, some folks are not in favor of it. So, I just wanted to make that statement, because there are three commissioners in that area, even though this sits in one district.
Any other questions, comments, statements?
Well, I'll say, I've received no, um, pushback from any sort on this matter. And one thing we did speak about as well, unlike the other two facilities, they will not be selling any type of adult material within these stores, which I think is of a big, big service to our community.
And we're willing to put that in the conditions that there'll be, um, no, um, adult or, um, as they call it, drug paraphernalia type stuff.
Correct.
Or gaming machines, thank you.
That's great. The other counties have zoning ordinances in place to not allow it in any of them. So, that's all.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Aye.
Nay.
So, it's four one, it passes. Next?
We alluded to some conditions, just wanted to double check if we wanted to attach any, uh, conditions to that motion.
The conditions were the eight-foot white sidewalks.
And the agreement was that they would not sell any adult material.
And also the sidewalks.
And, and this, uh, we can add the sidewalk condition. And I may add, from a staff standpoint, we would, would like to require shared access for the second parcel once it's developed, that they share the same access points that, that are shown on the drawing for the, uh, gas station.
And y'all agree to that?
That is acceptable.
That is acceptable, okay. Thank you.
The sidewalks will be eight-foot sidewalks per the requirements of the Transportation Division.
All right, Madam Clerk?
The next item is the one that you added, I, I couldn't really hear you. Was it nineteen oh eight zero zero twenty-nine?
You heard it right.
Okay.
Ms. Pam?
Yes, um, the request for the applicant, Alfred E. Zachary, is requesting a Conditional Use Permit within the General Business District for a place of worship. The subject property is located at twenty-six thirty-one, Mount Zion Road, Jonesboro, Georgia. The property is currently situated on five acres of land, has a hundred and ninety-two feet of frontage on Mount Zion Road. The staff recommendation is for approval, and the zoning advisory group recommendation is for approval, and both with conditions.
Okay, sir, you're the applicant?
Yes, I am.
You will state your name.
Al- Alfred Zachary.
Can I ask a quick question? I understand you were, uh, gonna ask us to hold it, is that true? Or you were thinking about asking us to hold it?
Well, per staff recommendation, because of the, uh, conditional, well, the Conditional Use Permit, uh, an issue came up in reference to the, uh, road frontage.
Yeah.
Um, we are...
Would you, would you agree to hold this?
I would agree if that, if that's necessary, but we've already applied for the variance in regards to that. However, we do own the adjacent, uh, adjacent property that gives us far more than the, you know, the hundred and, well, the twenty feet of road frontage that we actually need. But we can't combine those parcels at this particular time, because it's in two different names.
Sir, may I respectfully ask you to hold this, so you and I can chit chat?
Sure.
If you don't mind?
Don't mind.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we're, we're wanting to hold it until next hearing, until next, uh, month.
I'm sorry, yeah, I asked you to hold it until...
November...
November?
Tabled, yes.
Table it.
November what?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
November nineteenth. That's your motion, Commissioner?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, motion is to table it until November nineteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous, thank you.
Mister Chairman, the next item is a board appointment.
Okay, we have a board appointment to the Tourism Authority, uh, Board. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Brian Holmes. Term will begin immediately and will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Uh, this appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Mister Brian Holmes, who, uh, failed to, uh, who failed to attend two consecutive meetings. Uh, the term will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty. Are there any recommendations?
I move that we appoint Ms. Miyoshi Borje.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Mister Reed?
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. We, uh, like to have a, uh, executive session on litigation and personnel.
All right, we have a motion going executive session for litigation personnel. I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Mister Reed?
Uh, good evening. We have two appointments, um, for legal counsel. First is for, uh, Tamika West to represent the License Review Board. And the second is for the firm of Thompson Heine to represent, uh, Sylvester Ford in the, uh, challenge, um, filed, uh, Quo Aronto, uh, proceeding by, uh, Mister McMillan.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make, I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Let's change, make sure we change that name to Doctor McMillan.
Doctor Don McMillan.
Yes.
Uh, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion, okay? All right, she moved. I'm on second, I'm on second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.